We'd like to thank the board for inviting the commissioners and our staff to the joint session here at your facility. And I don't know, everyone looks pretty happy to me and hopefully Melissa will have some great news for us and we'll leave here as happy as we arrived. So with that, I'd like to turn everything over to Melissa Williams, your board president.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Baker. Good afternoon, President Baker, commissioners, county staff. We're here this afternoon in this joint meeting to present the Board of Education's draft FY 2019 General Fund Operating Budget. And Superintendent Michael and staff are prepared with the presentation for the commissioners.
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. We have a PowerPoint that we'd like to run through. If we could have that pulled up on the screen. We have four overarching themes that we're going to review here with the county commissioners. We're obviously going to look at kindergarten readiness, one of the issues that are staring us in the face as a community. We want to talk a little bit about the complexity of our students and how it's changed significantly over the last few years. Unfunded mandates are always a popular topic for budget sessions. And then with a budget that's 86, 87 percent people, we have to talk about how we're going to recruit, retain our employees. So as the boards probably read recently, both boards have read recently in the newspaper, about one out of three children are showing up ready for kindergarten. Staff's going to review that a little bit more carefully here in a few minutes than how we're addressing that. We are experiencing a significant increase in English language learners. These are students that are coming to us without English being their first language. It may not even be their second language, their only language might be their language that they're coming to us with. So we're going to share a little bit of information about that. Special education needs continue to change among our students and our population. The number of homeless students are going to be referred to as students in transition. They include homeless, foster care children, some other categories, but we refer to them as students in transition. But in essence, homeless students and how that's changed recently. Another big change for us that was alarming to me in the last couple of years is how much our home and hospitalization has changed and reasons for that. And then we want to talk to you a little bit about our truancy challenges. Historically, we've had excellent attendance. Frequently, Washington County's been number one in elementary, middle, and high school attendance. That's no longer the case. We're challenged by any number of students from elementary, middle, and high school age that are experiencing habitual truancy at this point. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen. She's in charge of testing and accountability, kind of our numbers person. And there'll be a number of staff members that'll be sharing additional information about slides as they come up. So, Maureen?
The first slide that we want to go over is the official school enrollment. And this is from 2005 to 2018. You can see that we've increased about 1,500 students during that time. That's an increase of population larger than North Hagerstown High School. This is only K through 12, so these are kindergartners through 12th grade students. We've seen a plateau in the last few years, but what we'd like to show you is that the number of students is similar, that the profile of students has changed. This graphic shows the percentage of our students that are eligible for free and reduced meals. We've gone from about one-third of our students eligible in 2004, 2005 to about half of our students eligible in 2017, 2018. So that's a significant increase in the number of students coming to school from homes of poverty.
And to address some of those needs within the free and reduced meal program, our overall nutrition program, you should know that we're serving breakfast in every school at this point. We have increased the numbers of breakfast sold in the last 10 years by about 35 percent to about 8,600 breakfasts every day. And we're now also serving in excess of 1,000 suppers every evening, both in school sites and in community locations.
Dr. Michael referred to our kindergarten readiness assessment results. This is given at the beginning of the year to our students who are entering kindergarten as an indicator of whether they're ready to learn the kindergarten curriculum. We had 37 percent of our students, you can see our bar is the last from the end, and this compares to 45 percent in the state of Maryland being ready for kindergarten, which is the gray bar in the center.
And this is something that you've heard a lot about in terms of our students readiness to come to school. And it is a direct reflection of our community, and while we're all working on it together, we're very concerned about the fact that we are second to the last in the state with only Prince George's County trailing us.
We've also had an increase in the number of students that are coming in receiving, English learners receiving services. So that has increased from 2014 to 2018. What I would like to point out is the number of immigrant students, which are the students that have been in the United States for three years or less. And we've doubled the number of these students coming to our schools.
And these students require more support in the form of teachers, paraprofessionals, tutoring, and language services. These students that are coming to us from other countries are often experiencing extreme and trying to escape extreme poverty. But many of them also have interrupted schooling, some of them not being in school since the sixth grade, and they find themselves in a ninth grade high school class not only having interruptions in their education, but not knowing the language to even begin to catch up. So they require a significant investment in the time of our staff to try and meet individual needs. In addition, they're coming to us not in central locations, they're coming to us in schools like Pleasant Valley and Clear Spring, where we need to provide services to one or more students.
Shows a breakdown of our students who are receiving special education services. These are students ages three through 21. And this is a total of more than 2,000 students, which is more than 10 percent of our student population. We've seen a growth in two areas, specifically autism and students with intellectual disabilities over the past few years.
There's been an increase in the intense behavioral needs as well as psychologically involved cases. And in response to this need, we've had to increase specialized services in the form of programs. We've grown from approximately 30 programs in 2010 to 51 specialized programs this year. We also provide services for children from birth. And the percent of births referred to us for services has increased from 3 percent in the year of 2010 to currently 21 percent of babies are referred to services that are delivered in the home.
We've also seen an increase in the number of students in transition. We're projected this year to meet or exceed the number of students that we had last year. So this is again a growing population of students.
Homeless students and students in transition often need support with transportation and just other additional services. Our goal, of course, is to minimize the disruption to their education until a secure and safe home is found.
The number of students who are receiving services for home and hospital teaching, this is the number of students that are accessing these services during the year. We're also seeing that these students' numbers are increasing.
We provide educational services, teachers to students in their home or, of course, in the hospital as needed. The number you see in front of you, the data reflects a cumulative number that continues to grow as students enter and exit based on their need for home and hospital teaching.
We're also seeing an increase in the number of habitually truant students. This is defined as Maryland by students who are age five through 20. They've been with us in our schools and membership for 91 or more days, and they've been unlawfully absent for 20 percent or more of the days that they've been enrolled with us.
Obviously, we work to address this concern at the school level. This is a significant resource that pools from the time and energies of our administrators, our pupil personnel workers, our counselors, and our student intervention specialists who work as a team to help our students attend school regularly.
We have experienced success in reaching our dropouts. This number represents the number of students that have left our school by the end of their senior year. We've been maintaining this around 100 for the past few years.
So what we wanted to do before we started into the numbers of the budget was just to make sure that we shared with the county commissioners and a reminder to our board the population we're working with here in Washington County. It's not a good thing, it's not a bad thing, it's the students that we have in Washington County. Our charge and challenge is to teach them and prepare them for the 21st century workforce, and that's exactly what our teachers and educational support personnel or administrators are dedicated to do. And we need your help today as we go through our budget process, as we describe what we believe to be a very conservative budget and how we're going to try to approach dealing with some of the challenges we have, continuing to deal with some of the challenges that we have. So at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Brannenberg, Mr. Prue to share a little bit about our budget, and then we'll certainly open it up to all types of questions you might have. Mr. Baker?
I just asked two quick questions here.
Sure.
When your students in transition, number of students reported 2012 to 2018, you have, I guess with the projected numbers, up to well over 800. I don't understand the projected.
So we're partway through this year. So based on the pace that we're going through with the students that have been identified as either homeless, involved in foster care, have had some type of trauma disruption in their life, have moved here from group homes, things like that. So we track that each year. So based on where we were this year compared to last year, staff has projected that we'll exceed the number that we had last year. So that's what the projection is.
One other question is home and hospital teaching. It looks like you have about 800 students. Are those students included in on your total student enrollment?
Those students are included in our total enrollment of students. Now, these are students, these are separate instances of students. These are all different children. Generally, you have to be out for more than two weeks to receive home and hospitalization care. So some of these children are out for three or four weeks. Some of these children are out for, you know, three and four and five months. These are separate instances of home and hospitalization. One of the big challenges we're seeing right now is a lot of school anxiety, mental illness, particularly in some grade levels. And all of that is pushed down from what at one time was upper high school to middle school and now into elementary. So this is part of the mental illness challenge we have in Washington County. We're seeing that reflected in our school population as well as broken leg, hospitalization, operation. We've also seen a number of children, unfortunately, it kind of comes in cycles a little bit, that have cancer very young age, you know, severe medical challenges, so it could be part of that population as well.
There we go.
Okay, so we've talked about a number of the challenges that we've been facing in trying to fulfill our mission of educating all students in Washington County. Now we'll talk about some of the budget implications for that. Behind the PowerPoint slides, when we get finished that, there are a few pages. There's a three-page summary of changes in the FY 19 budget from the FY 18 budget. And then behind that, you have the complete budget document. I may be referring to a couple of sections in the three-page summary as we go through these. First is kindergarten readiness. And as you know, one of our top priorities is to increase the kindergarten readiness of our students. Our goal is to have 1,000 students enrolled in pre-K next year. And to that end, at every opportunity, we're adding classroom teachers and paraprofessionals, many of which are redeployments. This budget also adds 10 new classroom positions, and we continue to look for further opportunities to provide for this important initiative. The total cost of the new pre-K programs is $2.2 million. Another important aspect of this budget deals with how we address the complex needs of our students reviewed on the earlier slides. Several staff positions are added to the budget to support improved student services that address truancy, dropout prevention, emotional, physical needs, and other services. We also need to expand programs with students with disabilities by adding two special ed teachers and for our increasing English learners population by adding four teachers to address that problem. In the area of recruiting, training, and retaining employees, we have several considerations. Of course, we want to provide competitive salaries and wages for our bargaining groups that represent over 2,900 employees, 2,600 of which are in the General Fund Operating Budget. The salary resource pool is in Section 3A 7 of the summary document. We believe that we need a 5 percent increase in our medical premiums to address the healthcare costs for medical inflation to restore our self-insurance fund balance. The board's portion of that cost amounts to $1.8 million. We also plan to enhance pay for substitutes to address, to provide a sufficient pool of substitutes that addresses shortages that we are experiencing today and remain competitive with surrounding districts. We also need to meet our pension payment obligations. Many people would be surprised to learn that in addition to the contributions that we are paying towards the plan, there also are administrative fees that we are paying that are over $600,000 a year. And we have an increase in that projected for next year. And then also, you've heard much about this sick leave mandate for part-time employees and those that are not part of any other bargaining group. So we have provided an estimate that represents our understanding of the law to date for that. We've also gone through the budget to identify some cost savings to help pay for some of these initiatives. We have eliminated 10 non-teaching positions, six of which we presented in the first quarter budget adjustments to you last fall. We redeployed numerous staff to meet needs of students and adjust for change in enrollments. And in addition, we went through the budget line by line, as you'll see in Section 4 of the summary, and came up with a net of $2.2 million in savings there. So in total, the final slide here is our request of the county commissioners. And first and foremost, as staff, we are thankful for the guidance, support, and leadership of the Board of Education in the creation of the budget and creating what we believe is a conservative approach and making the cuts where needed so that our ask of the county is reduced over, you know, we added a lot of programs, we added a lot of initiatives, we added some staff. But we looked internally first through the board's guidance and leadership to find some cuts to minimize the impact on our community. So I'll walk you through what this overall looks like. Our total incremental funding requirement for this year over the current fiscal year's budget is roughly $5 million. You can see it's $5,4,145. We are pleased with the state's funding this year, in part due to Governor Hogan's increase in education funding. The state funding came in on the high end of our projection, where we were projecting between 1 and 3 million from the state. We received 2.7 million from the state, which leaves a counting funny request of $2.3 million. And the lower breakdown will break down how that comes to you. $38,770 is a requirement to maintenance of effort based on our increase in enrolled students in September of 2017 comparatively to the same time in 2016. We also have the maintenance of effort, the low effort designation is required by COMAR, which is $1.26 million. In FY 18, we received a disparity grant, or rather, the county received a disparity grant that was required to be funded to the local Board of Education. Legally, you can deduct that from the payments, so we're reflecting that at 50, just about $53,000. So our request to the county above maintenance of effort is $1,52,245. Dr. Michael?
So it's, I can assure you that staff has gone through the budget very thoroughly. We've tried to make our requests as reasonably as possible to the county. We're grateful to the state, the state funding committed the numbers. Mr. Prue indicated the 2.7 million, that was on the high end of what we expected based on our enrollment increase. So that's been very helpful to us as a county system. I think it's important for the county commissioners to know and understand that our employee costs currently, we have not settled with any of the three bargaining groups except for the administrators at this point, a tentative settlement. But we're estimating employee costs just for salaries, not for additional positions, but just for salaries and healthcare, exceed more than $6 million of new money in this budget. Yet our total new ask of new money is $5 million. So we're covering the cost of employee raises, cost of healthcare raises in this budget, as well as the changes we made to address student needs at less than the cost of our entire increase for salary pool. So with that, I'll turn it back to Mrs. Williams and entertain any questions the county commissioners or anybody might have. Mr. Baker? I have it in a notebook somewhere, I think Eric probably can come up with that. So if everything remained the same and there was no increase in maintenance of effort, the amount per student would remain the same indefinitely. And in theory, if the county share of maintenance of effort was $6,000 10 years ago and there was never an increase to maintenance of effort, and we grew, didn't matter how many children we grew or how many children we decreased, the amount would be identical. The amount has changed over the last 10 years, we've shared that with your staff, I know that Rob's got it somewhere. And it has increased over time, but I think, you know, probably only a couple percent over the entire 10-year period. Eric, do you?
We've got a document that we can distribute if that's the wish.
Sure, we have a document available to distribute right now.
We can get that, it's in the ballpark, just looking at rough numbers, we're calculating on the fly here, between $4,500 and $4,600 per student is maintenance of effort currently. Absolutely. That's just the county's portion.
Other questions from anybody? We'd be glad to share anything, the previous slides or in the budget slides?
Commissioners, I'd like you to know that before this meeting today, we've met twice in work session. We've held a public hearing on the budget on January 16th. We've heard from our advisory committee, we call the BARK. And as Dr. Michael said, we've taken a very conservative approach to the budget. And I firmly believe that this budget is reflective of the changing demographics of Washington County Public Schools and Washington County as a whole. Later this afternoon, we're going to have another work session with the goal of deciding on our final budget for approval at this evening's business meeting. So we welcome your comments, we welcome your questions.
I have a comment and observation. First of all, I'd like to thank many of the school board members have reached out to me personally or tagged me at times, and I appreciate that to share with me your thoughts on the budget. And that's not something I've experienced in the past two years. So I thought that was a nice approach, I'd just like to recognize your effort and your obvious dedication to the budget. Just an observation, it seems like total school enrollment is pretty much staying flat for the most part, not a significant increase. English learners seems to have taken a jump this past year by a couple hundred students. Out of curiosity, do you receive any help from the federal level of government for dealing with those students and meeting those needs that we have to?
There is Title III money that we receive, and we do receive a slight increase from that. And there's also state formula money that comes with some of that, but it's not enough to cover the costs. Much like special ed, a lot of people believe the special ed money comes from the federal government and IDEA money, when in fact, only about a third of that comes from the federal government, about two-thirds, maybe even three-fourths has to come from local resources. So similar to the English language learner students, we submit a form to the state. We do get some funding and support for any increase that we have, but it's not enough to cover the cost of the resources needed to support the students.
What's the cost of that English learning program, your budget approximately?
Paula, do you know that, or Eric? And what we have, the costs that they're going to give you in a minute, it's just the costs we have segmented out for English language learner teachers. A lot of the students are involved in the regular program, so this is up and beyond regular programming that the students received. So Eric, do you have?
Yeah, if you look at page 10 of the 41-page document, just the salary cost of the ELL.
Just give them a second to get, so our document at the bottom is not necessarily the 10th page in your document, but the bottom is numbered 10 out of 41.
Old guys need larger font. I got, I'm right here, need binoculars.
Thank you, thank you.
So Eric, you're on page 10 of 41.
Yeah, I guess it's line four is the salary cost of the ELL teachers of just over 1.4 million. There's also other benefits costs that would be roughly probably in the 30 percent, 30 to 35 percent range. And plus, there's other resources, as Dr. Michael mentioned, that are used to support ELL. But these are the specific teachers that support that.
So this would be the general fund budget amount. There'd be, Title III money would be in our grant money, which would be beyond the budget. So Paula, our English language learner specialist and foreign language specialist, says our Title III money is total about $60,000. So $60,000 for over 500 children that don't speak English isn't going very far from the federal government. So the rest of it's got to come here locally. This is a challenge that a lot of the other districts have had that are closer to the city. You know, it's obviously moved through PG County, Montgomery County, some in Frederick County, and now we're experiencing an increase in ELL learners. County, and now we're experiencing an increase in ELL learners. Other questions about the budget or information that's been shared?
For clarification, Dr. Michael, this is the operating portion of the budget, correct?
Correct. I think we have another joint meeting scheduled, and we'd like to present our CIP. We've submitted the CIP information, I think we submitted in December, the request of county staff. We do that every year, but we've separated today's general fund from CIP, just so there wouldn't be any confusion. So our capital budget during our next joint meeting, we'll talk about our capital budget.
I've just been thinking about the square footage of the schools, the Barbara Ingram School and the Sharpsburg Project. What's the total square footage that you're looking at in Sharpsburg?
I don't have that off the top of my head. That would be a question we'll be prepared to answer at the meeting.
About the Barbara Ingram School?
Barbara Ingram School, 54,000, 53?
54 off the top of my head.
Is it all five floors?
Yes.
I do have a comment or question. Dr. Michael, I can't help but notice that it appears on the surface anyway that student enrollment is kind of leveled off, and yet when we go back to many of these other charts, they continue to be on a, obviously, an incline and at tremendous cost. And I'm wondering what projections or what the hope is that at some point in time, many of these components would level off also.
That would be our hope that they're going to level off as well, but it just appears that right now at least, our student enrollment projections right now are pretty flat. We might even decline next year. So this year, we grew a few students. Our tentative projections for next year is we'd actually decline a little bit. That obviously will hurt us in state funding, will hurt us potentially with local funding as well, because just like maintenance of effort can be a positive number, maintenance of effort, not per student, has to be the same number, minimally the same number, but the total amount of money that we can receive as a system could be a negative number if our population declines. And again, that's why we kind of started with the challenges that we have in these charts, because our population has changed. I wish we just had increase in enrollment, we'd continue to get more money from the state as well as from the county, and I wish some of these other graphs were going the other way because our job would become a little less challenging. But right now, our population, and like I say, we are anxious and willing to serve all of our students, but it is a challenging population, and it has changed significantly just in the last five years here in Washington County, as you can see from the graphs.
As a businessman, I'm sitting here almost to some degree watching the candle burn at both ends, unfortunately.
Would it be worthwhile in explaining low effort in that the county has met the MOE requirements? Low effort is a name that has been placed upon that. Could we just get a brief summary for the commissioners where that calculation comes from?
Do you have the COMAR numbers?
And confirm that that is a state calculation and that is a state label that has been placed on it, not the Board of Ed and not anyone here at this table?
Right. It's a state designation, there's actually a definition that I think we've shared with our board, and I think maybe I've sent it to you, Rob, and it's what you're requesting. So David's probably our best to explain it here off the top of his head.
It's in COMAR, Section 13A 020505, and defines that as a county that does not keep up with the state average increases in education funding compared to its growth in wealth. And so it's a calculation that MSD does at the request of the Department of Legislative Services, and they don't, they give us the percentage. There is a three-pronged test, and it's the lesser of those three tests where you fall. So the growth in the wealth in Washington County this past year, I believe, was 1.3 percent, Eric? Can you? Okay, and so 1.3 percent per student is how that 1,261 is calculated.
Are those numbers in and final from the state, or are those projections at this point?
I believe it's the first draft. We don't expect big changes in it, but it is a first draft. It's not final until April, I believe, after the legislative session's over, but it does represent a draft. Now, they might still tweak a couple people, a couple of numbers of enrollment here and there for things, but that is our best estimate of the funding right now.
County Commissioners, thank you for hosting today's meeting. All five county commissioners are locally educated, and probably all of us are sitting here because of teachers and coaches, combination of both. So I'm sure we're going to do what's best for the community and our upcoming students and youth, and we're going to do what we can to help you overcome your budget concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.